Good evening, welcome to the Monday, June 18th, meeting of the Albion City Council. I call this meeting to order, we will begin with a moment of silence. Thank you, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Domingo, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Barnes?
Here.
Reed, Brown?
Here.
Lawler?
Here.
Spicer?
Here.
French?
Here.
And Mayor Brown?
Here. Are there any comments from council this evening? Councilman Barnes?
Good evening. First, I'd like to address the Albion Public Safety. I have to pull it up from my phone again. This weekend, a precinct won in the heart of our neighborhood. We had a neighborhood block party. Myself and Charles Holmes, we met with Chief Kip on the particulars. Chief Kip came over and I did, and we put the barriers down closer to the homes so the crowd could move in closer, and we bring the cars in off of Broadway and wow, number Broadway and Third. It was wonderful. We had at least 300-plus people. It started at 10:00 a.m. and we started shutting it down at 1:19 a.m. We had not one incident, not one complaint from anyone. Okay, and I want to thank Chief Kip. I want to thank Officer Billy Lazarus, Officer Jack Williamson, they did the first shift. I want to thank Officer Carolyn Nope and K-9 Lucy Jo, Officer Kyle Wilson, and the two final people, I must say, they went above and beyond their call of duty. Officer Tiffany Ruckner and Acting Sergeant Rich Quit. And Quit didn't have a great reputation in our neighborhood at one time, but he does now. Prior to this, Chief and Deputy Chief Kern had been working on him. At 1:19, when I called for them to close it down, they walked up to the crowd. They did not give one order, they came greeting them pleasing and pleasurable. "How you doing? Did you enjoy yourself? You know, I'm glad you enjoyed yourself, it's time to shut down." Do you know that crowd walked away and went home? Because most people had thought that we would have some type of incident. I didn't, and I want to applaud our police department because without their police community relations, leadership under Chief Kip and directed by Officer Kern, I believe we would have an incident if there was any other officer who didn't have that type of attitude and mentality. Thank you. Secondly, I'd like to talk about North Street. Last meeting, we talked about the streets that we would do. The research that I had last week, I didn't use. But I want to know if any council people know the low limits on North Street, any council member know the low limit empty, the low limit full? How many businesses are being operated out there? There's only one business on North Street. We have other truck routes that could be used, Clark, Michigan, and B Drive. First, Second, and Third Streets, I've been trying to have repaired for eight years. For four years, I've received the numbers from city services and administration on what it would cost. The costs to do First, Second, and Third are much less than North Street. All of this is dependent on the grant that we'll get for Irwin Avenue. I've called the chief and he was going to check on particulars of the numbers that I had. So I want council to be aware, we are riding on sand on First, Second, and Third Streets. North Street does not have to be a truck route. We have other areas that they can enter from, each end of the city. Uh, thank you, something else I forgot to pick up.
I want to start off a couple of comments. I want to thank or applaud our interim manager, the department head, Jim Leonardson, and the excellent city staff who worked diligently to deal with the water main issue on West Chestnut. I know that affected the entire city and I think that I along with the council want to thank them for quickly dealing with that. We were pretty efficient, yeah.[302.02][302.02][applause] I know it was inconvenience to the residents, but you know, as the interim manager stated, you know, when we're trying to do some positive things with the water tower, it affects the water system. So, we know it's inconvenience, but I think that the city staff did an excellent job in responding to that, so I just wanted to thank them. I want to also thank a couple of the department heads and the manager, Jim Leonardson, John Tracy, interim manager Kip. I was able to meet with Johnny Dunklin, who's come to a number of the meetings and voiced his concern. I think he stays on Second Street regarding the street repairs. Council at one of our previous meetings signaled an intent to do some work on First and Second, Third Streets in the year 2020, which is the final year of the current street millage. And we had an opportunity at length to discuss where that funding comes from, how the city distributes it to the various precincts through rotation, kind of rotating basis. And you know, one of the things that we pointed out is, you know, Albion, we quote this a lot, but Albion has about 50 miles of road, and if we redo the road, usually, I don't know if it's complete reconstruction or just the resurfacing, but that's like a million dollars per mile. Our annual budget with all the funds is about 11-point-something million. So you know, if we wanted to actually keep up with the funding it would take to redo every street, we're talking about major millage increases. So I think the city's been very diligent in doing what we, what the voters have approved for us to use, to fix streets, and so I'm, again, thankful for council for committing to doing First, Second, and Third Streets to the extent possible in 2020. And then I also want to point out that if the grant for the ICE comes through, which is, that'll allow us, an ICE grant would allow us to redo the entirety of Irwin Ave., which I know residents in that area have asked for, for a number of years. So, that would be grant-funded, and then North Street is a situation where that's a major street, so we receive matching or some funds from the state to do that, so, and those fall within a cycle. So if we don't do it in 2019, we basically forfeit that free money from the state essentially. Let's see, what else is on my notes here? I think that's it right now. I just wanted to address that conversation, and then, you know, when I talk to Mr. Duncan, I think it's helpful, I'll say this, going forward for residents, what we usually do is we allow public comment for the public. We try not to respond because we give staff a chance to respond, but what I want to do make, going forward, is making sure that when we have council comments, I come back and report back what has been done or what planning has been agreed upon since that last meeting. So I just wanted to report on that. Councilmember Reed, and then Councilmember Lawler.
On Saturday, we had Albion's Juneteenth celebration, which was very, very nice. And I just wanted to thank the police department who was there and who helped us out a lot, and Chief Kip who wore his first hat as police officer and escorted us in the parade down to the park. I thank Kelly for all that he did because he provided all the musical stuff for us for the gospel fest, and the walkers who walked in the parade, and everyone. It was just really a nice day. It was quite warm, but it was a very nice day, and I think everything worked well. So, and thank you to the community for coming up.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to also thank the Albion Public Safety for the response that happened on Marion Street over the weekend. They were out there doing their job, doing a good job. As I walked down my street, because the incident happened down the street from my house, I knew there was nothing I could really do but just offer them, it was so hot that day, just to offer some bottled water or something, but they were on the job and did it quickly and got it done, and I just thank them for that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. One adjustment I'd like to make, there was, I think it's reflected on that agenda, correct? The presentation they removed. Okay, but we're gonna, just, there was a presentation A regarding the Coke. Yeah, I'm gonna come by, I'm just making a motion. Just to remove item A under presentations, there was a funding change there, and that was put on before, it could be removed before noon today. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Again, this is just to remove item A at the request of Mrs. Coleman. Is there any discussion? Okay. Seeing no discussion, we'll just have a quick roll call vote. Oh, we can do a voice vote. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Okay, that passes. Councilmember Barnes?
French.
Oh, okay. I didn't see.
Um, just want to update the community on a couple of events being supported by local nonprofits, including the Americor Vista Initiative. The first is coming up this Saturday, June 23rd, from 12 until 4:00. The Live Albion Health and Safety Expo at the fire station. There'll be music and concessions, baby CPR, fire safety, Lucy Jo and the K-9 unit, the rec department, kids fingerprinting, Zumba, and more. This event is sponsored by Mark Putkin State Farm, Oaklawn Farm Bureau Insurance, Albion Healthcare Alliance, the Vista team, public safety, Hickerson Music, and Blue Ox Credit Union. So, come out for that. And then the other one I want to talk about is the community picnic at the Victory Park. Community picnic hosted by us, the Build Albion Americor Vista Initiative. It's a celebration of everything that's been accomplished over the first couple of years of Vista service, especially this second year. There'll be all kinds of fun activities and games. It'll be officially at the small shelter at Victory Park, but it will likely spill out throughout the park. So, it's got free fruit and drinks and an opportunity to connect with each other and just build community. So that's July 14th, also from 12 until 4:00. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Barnes?
I forgot my third item. Concerning North Street, North Street will be done by Albion local tax dollars. The Irwin Avenue projected grant has not been awarded yet, and it's a three-year cycle state grant that I would definitely approve, because we could lose out on free money. We just would have to do the match. And our match is coming out of our local budget. Therefore, even though we have Irwin Avenue, North Street is a separate issue also, just like Third Street would be a separate issue. Council can still nix North Street and do First, Second, and Third if they chose to do so. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no, oh, Councilmember Lawler?
I have one more thing. I was asked to be a voice for a dialysis patient. She had notified the local dialysis place that, asked them was they having, were they having dialysis? And they assured her, yes. And she had asked them, "With the water like that?", and she said that they were told water was, they had been tested the water, water was okay. So, I guess she went in the next day and they had told her that the water was off. So, they assured the person in my precinct that they were not told about the water. She thought it was, dialysis is a life situation for her. So, what I'm asking is to try and find a system where, when the water is out, I was told that we are supposed to notify the dialysis place, and they were not aware of the water situation or why it was off. And so, I'm just asking for the sake of the person in my precinct to come up with something to make sure that these places know about our water problems when they do arise. I'm not sure what to do, or if anyone I'm asking and reaching out to anyone that is watching or here tonight, what we can do to make sure that everybody is getting the information. Everybody is not on Facebook, everybody is not on different social media sites. So, if we could find a solution to do that, and plus the businesses that are being affected in these certain areas that the water is shut off, we make sure that we notify them, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to, Councilmember Lawler reminded me, so I am going to have comments. I had called Mayor Brown regarding the water, and again, let me commend our city staff. You guys did an excellent job, excellent job. But I was approached by a few people about not knowing right away, so I had made some suggestions. I think he tried, Mayor tried to cut me out because he's probably gonna bring it up, but...
Oh, it's on the agenda?
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna discuss that a little bit more.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
I was gonna bring your suggestion up too.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no further comments from council, move on to city manager's report.
I'd just like to remind the community that we do actually have an emergency alerting system for the community called NICSIL, and I forget sometimes to repeat that message to people because new people move into the community and that doesn't get, that information doesn't get out. You can sign up for NICSIL, which will give you either email or text alerts on your phone, or it can call your phone as well by going to our public safety webpage, and under news, there's an easy signup section there. The easiest way, though, to get NICSIL with your smartphone and get text messages is to text to the phone number 888-777, and then in the message part, put our zip code, 49224. Once you do that, you'll get a NICSIL alerts on your phone, and you'll also get alerts from not just the city of Albion, but from also from the Cowan County Sheriff's Department because you're within their jurisdiction as well. But the Marshall Police Department, Cowan County Sheriff's Department, the Michigan State Police, and Emmett Township Public Safety and the Battle Creek Police Department all use NICSIL for alerting purposes. And you can, if you go online and sign up on an account with NICSIL, you can actually add any of those to where you're at. The interesting part about NICSIL, though, is if you follow it and you know where you're at, if you're on vacation somewhere as well, you can actually sign up for special alerts in the locations that you're at if something were to happen. I was in Washington DC over the Fourth of July several years ago. They had a special alerting system just for that, where you put in July 4 DC, and you get all the alerts that day. And it came in handy as we had some emergency weather alerts that came out and so forth. So, if you're interested in that, I encourage people to sign up. Again, 888-777, and then put the area or the zip code in the message for 49224.
Okay. We'll move on now to presentations, to the new item A, which is Eagle Scout Project from Jeff McClure.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jack McClure. I'm a Boy Scout of Troop 158 here in Albion. And tonight, I'd like to present real quick and briefly my project proposal that I have. I would like to do a project in the Riverside Cemetery where I would replace the Liberty Tree that's already been taken out with a new tree that would be healthy and grow. And around that, put fencing and benches with symbols of the police force and the military branches as well. I will lead this project with adult leadership as well, but for the most part, I'll be in charge of this project. I'm just here tonight to see if I could get acceptance and have a page ten of my project proposal the council or district representative sign my Abbott signed so that I may continue on to go to the Boy Scout Committee, who will also accept my project if it is acceptable.
Can you give us a little sense of the timeframe that you have?
Timeframe? I'm looking to do this project anywhere from between the, near the end of this month to the beginning of next month. That's what I'd like to start. Definitely after the 27th, because that'll be when my committee meetings takes place. Hopefully, I'll be accepted.
And then I guess my final question, are you doing, is there any fundraising involved?
Yes. I already have an estimate of the cost. It's looking between $450 to $500. I'll probably have fundraising within the Boy Scout troop and family donations as well. Help contribute to the cost.
Are there any questions from council this evening? Well, I know, congratulations, I know that's a step you take after years of hard work, so. Would we need to authorize access? Yeah, I don't know if Jim, is Jim? He's not here, okay. Well, we can follow up with that if we need to give official approval. So what we'll do is, I don't think you'll, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was told by Mr. Leonardson that I would first come here, and then I was gonna contact Mr. Peter Brooks, who I heard works at the Riverside Cemetery.
Okay.
I'd like to present to him that the council approved this and signed the place where it needs to be signed so that he would know that I already came here.
Okay. Councilmember French?
I would like to put forth that motion, but in order for us to do that, we have to change the agenda.
We want to let him, have you had a chance to review? Have you had a chance to review anything? What we're, just, is that a document for, do you have a copy of the document?
Yep, right here. Eagle Scout Service Project.
Do we need to review that, just for a permit? I'm just doing a live door. Yeah, I know, I apologize, we have the air conditioning's out, so. No, I'm saying, do we need to review before we approve? Okay, so there's a motion to amend the agenda to add that as item, item H. Is there a second? It's moved in second. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All opposed? Okay, thank you. So you're on the agenda, and we'll approve that a little bit later.
Get to hang out for a little while, then we'll do it.
Yes.
Do you have language of the motion, of your request in that?
Yes, yeah.
I believe so.
Why don't you just give it to me and I'll take a look at it?
Yeah, if you could pass that to the attorney, I'd appreciate it. Councilmember French?
Appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you. We'll move on to public hearing. This is set to 2018 tax levy, so I'm gonna open this. This is for public comment exclusively on the levying of taxes for 2018, so. Is there any public comment this evening on Resolution Number 2018-16 to set the 2018 tax levy?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Albion. At this time, I'd like to point out...
Can you state your name and address?
I am Albion. Al Smith, 1209 Adams Street. At this time, I'd like to point out discrepancy that I'm surprised our esteemed city attorney missed or will offer a plausible explanation for. In tonight's packet, we are supplied by a very competent professional city clerk the notice of this public hearing and a copy of the proposed Resolution Number 2018-16. I draw your attention to item number four, 1.5 mils for recreation that was previously voted approved, or voter approved, May 2015 for three years, which is fast running out. In reading the proposed resolution, you will take note that it will raise a total of $129,505, as was sufficient for operations in the past, though a bit tight. Now, I wish to draw your attention to Resolution Number 2018-13, voted on and passed by this body with a four-to-one vote with two being absent on May 7, 2018. This was, and I quote, "to approve ballot language to increase the levy to two mils for three years to raise dedicated funding to $172,000 per year for the continued operation of the recreation program of the city of Albion," end quote. If you may recall, the additional 0.5 mils was to be added to help offset the $25,000 rental fee being charged by Marshall Schools for the use of the facilities at the Opportunity School and provide a bit of a cushion. Also, this body has resolved to request the presence of Mr. Larry Williams of the Recreation Department to give a better understanding of fund usage. To my knowledge, this has not occurred. Currently, my questions are these. I know I won't get responses, but they are. Is it to be the continued practice of this august body to disregard their own approved resolutions for what feels good coming down the pike? Number two, if you are to regard your own resolutions as not worth the paper they're written on, why do you persist in wasting the taxpayer's time in making it? Number three, is Resolution Number 2018-13 a legal resolution at the basis sense of this term or not? I thank you for your time and consideration. I am Al Smith. I am Albion.
Is there any further public comment on the public hearing item this evening? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and we will, well, I'll take a motion for approvals if we can have a discussion. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? For approvals we can discuss? Okay. Want me to give you a second?
Yeah, so what that was, the setting of the mils in the Resolution Public Hearing was actually requested by the county. We actually, or you should say, you as a council already approved those when you approved your budget. Essentially, the county just wanted us to hold a public hearing. I had a discussion with our finance director about that and our clerk about that, and that the statute didn't require us to hold a public hearing because you already approved this. A public hearing is only required when you're adjusting the number of mils, which weren't, didn't do this year in terms of your budget. I mean, obviously, you're seeking ballot language to increase it in the future, but not in this particular budget that you're currently in. So, the, there was no mistake in the language that was put before you. It's just a reiteration of the mils you already set and already approved. The county just wanted us to have a public hearing, and I think the finance director can speak to that.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Tom Mead, Finance Director, and I think Colin said it pretty well, or the city attorney said it pretty well. To clarify, I think there's a little confusion on what was discussed and approved in May versus what we're doing tonight. If you look at this, the recreation millage being a three-year millage matures this year.
Yes.
Although, we are allowed to levy that mill this year, and that's what we're doing tonight with the 1.5 is that would be the third year, final year of the recreation millage that expires this year. So on the summer tax bill, we were asking that we would levy the 1.5. No, in May, what we were talking about is going to the voters in August to renew and increase that recreation millage, and that would start with a levy in '19 and go three years from there.
So, basically, we're reiterating that we've already been doing tonight?
Tonight is just, yep, for '18, there are no new millages. In fact, there's actually gonna be a little less on the tax bill this year because, number one, the debt that we were paying, paid off in '17, so we were able to remove the debt service millage. In addition, we won't have a sidewalk assessment, so that'll save everybody 50 bucks. And all the other millages that are reflected on here, general mill, or general fund, the street, and solid waste, both at three mils, and the recreation for one and a half, are all existing, no change from prior years.
And what we, and just making it real plain, so, nothing's changed to what we're currently doing, and what we did a couple of months ago was basically to ask the voters to make a decision later this year about the future amount of mils for recreation.
Correct, yeah, two different things. This is just let the public know what we're doing with this year's levy, and what we did in May was setting the groundwork so that we could start the process to go to the county, get the ballot language approved, so that we can go to the polls in August. so that we can go to the polls in August and ask for the increase for the future, and renewal with increase in the future.
Councilor French.
Thank you, Mayor. So just thinking in terms of trying to keep everybody from being confused moving forward, wouldn't this public hearing be better served done in January or December when we approve a budget?
We've had.
Rather than six months in?
Yeah, we have had, in preparing this, we had a pretty lengthy conversation with the Equalization Director of Calhoun County. And they gave us some suggestions, that being one. The only thing that's a little tricky for us, if you remember, a lot of municipalities, a lot of cities have a 30th year end. And it makes it a little, they're doing their budget at a different time of year, so they pretty much know, you know, what their quarter review numbers are going to be and everything else. With us, we're kind of guessing, because ours is being done in the fall. But having said that, he said it is allowable to use estimates in that, you know, to do the approval process with estimates on what you think your taxable values are going to be and stuff. So that's, yes, good point.
Thank you, Tom.
Are there any further questions from council this evening? Okay. Seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. Public comments, persons addressing the city council shall limit their comments to no more than three minutes. We ask that you observe proper decorum. This public comment is for agenda items only. Please state your name and address. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Wallace Reese, I live 911 Irwin Avenue. I have a complaint about the water department. They had a water main break on Dal Romper and Irwin. They did not notify anybody in that area that they were about to make repairs. Whenever you make repairs on a water main, which is the city's responsibility, they must notify every house in that area that that water will affect. That's not hearsay, that's the way the law is written. And that wasn't done. I happened to get the news by text, okay? And all I'm asking is, water mains do break. Notify everybody in that particular area that that water is going to affect, because it affects little kids. I hear about it on the television, okay? That certain areas, the water was contaminated. You not use the water, boil the water. This is the city's responsibility to notify each resident in that area that it affect, okay? Cities that I've lived in, they always came out and made sure that every house, if they didn't knock on the door, they put letters in the mail telling them when the water main going to be repaired, and this wasn't done. And that is unfair to the citizens of Albion. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment this evening on agenda items?
Back. Al Smith, 1209 Adams Street. I wish to bring to the full council's attention a great concern regarding Agenda Item 10, Consent Calendar, specifically Sub Item B, Approval Regular Session Minutes, June 4, 2018. On page six of nine of the minutes submitted for approval tonight, documents, remarks made by Mayor Brown concerning a discussion held in private between the mayor and another council member regarding the issue of restricting specific downtown buildings for minorities as a topic originating with the former city manager Cheryl Mitchell. I would first remind the council that multiple Albion citizens and city council members voiced strong objections to such a discriminatory policy during the 4-June council meeting. Objections which the mayor overruled. However, my greatest concern is the unethical and illegal practice of the mayor conducting city business in private to avoid public scrutiny. This clearly violates Michigan's Open Meetings Act. I further point out to the council and Mayor Brown, this sort of unethical and illegal conduct only serves to further erode and the already severely damaged public trust. Regretfully, this sort of arrogant conduct has become common practice under the current leadership of our council. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Dave Atchison, 108 West Derry Street, Precinct 2. I rise to address Agenda Item F, which is Request Approval Boards and Commission Appointments. Would the council please address and explain what the selection process is for appointment to these boards? How long it takes an application to reach the mayor, and ultimately to the council for approval and confirmation? It's highly commendable when civic-minded citizens such as Ashley step forward and volunteer to serve on city boards and commissions. And I, for one, I know her, I applaud her, and have no doubt she's going to do an excellent job. I do question whether there is a fair and consistent procedure which the city council follows to fill vacancies on the Albion boards and commissions. The current list of vacancies posted on the city's website, and it's been posted for many months, includes 15 vacancies. Shouldn't every application for appointment be given a fair and equitable consideration? And when a citizen applies to serve on a board or commission, doesn't common courtesy dictate that they at least get a, well, thank you for your application, but? I would remind the council that over the past 18 months, Albion residents who live here in Albion with over 20 years, some of which have doctorates in community development, have applied for vacancies on the Planning Commission, the EDC, and the DDA. Seems like a perfect fit with their background and their long-term residency. And they haven't even gotten a thank you but. A year ago, I know an Albion resident who's a small business owner, a woman business owner who resides in the downtown district and pays taxes, also applied for a vacant seat on the Downtown Development Authority. She never heard anything, nobody got back to her. And then last month, a disabled veteran, a small business owner, one who owns rental property and lives in downtown Albion, has a master's degree in resource management, applied for a vacant seat on the Downtown Development Authority, and hasn't been considered, hasn't heard anything. And I just took a quick look at the, I know when it was submitted, I know when Ashley submitted hers, and it was well before that. Citizens of Albion expect fair and equitable treatment, and I think it is only fair that all of the council members know the applications that are in, and what the final determination is on them. I think they have a right, representing our precincts, to know what's going on. And I don't think it's right to have applicants pile up and no decision. Thank you.
Little of eight weeks, 917 Luther Drive. I've also had the same concerns. Why people in good standing are not even approached? I know one person has asked two or three times to be on the Planning Commission. He's been overlooked. And I also know that people that don't even live here, but they used to live here, are on the board now. That doesn't make good sense for someone that doesn't live in Albion to be on one of our boards, in my book anyway.
Is there any further public comments this evening on agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move on to Consent Calendar. There's approval for a study session from May 31, 2018, and approval of the regular session minutes from June 4. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, did all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Okay. You have approved the minutes. Items for individual discussion. Item A, Request Approval for Assessing Contract with Edward Van der Vries, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, if you'd like to come forward.
Good evening. My name's Edward Van der Vries.
Joshua Cunningham.
Joshua Cunningham, who, in our proposal, would be who I would recommend you appoint as the assessor of record. The contract that you see here is basically one that I started my career on 22 years ago. My first units were the City of Galesburg and Charleston Township, and I worked under a mentor, Ted Breizner, at that time. And found that this type of system works very well for bringing new people into the assessing business. It also gives you not only a new assessor, but with my background, I've been the Equalization Director for Van Buren County for 14 years, I just ended last December. I'm still the Equalization Director for Oceana County. I'm the city assessor for the City of Portage, and the Townships of Sheridan, in Macosta County, and Moran Township up in Mackinac County. And we're going to be leaving here to head over to the City of Marshall meeting, and they're looking at a similar proposal for the City of Marshall as well. And what that does is it gives Josh the support and some comfort level for you as a city that we're going to make sure the job gets done right, that we meet the AMAR requirements that the state has proposed. It also is going to give you protection, I guess. There's current legislation that is in committee right now, where about eight years ago, they actually had four levels of assessors, level one, two, three, and four. And eight years ago, they basically did away with the level one assessors and gave them a short period of time to become level two assessors. That's what Josh is now. But the current legislation that they're proposing will no longer allow a level two assessor to sign any role. There's a lot of opposition to that, but we don't know where that's going to go. If that happens, we would just have to revise the contract slightly, where I would be able to step in, be the assessor of record. Josh would still be here, working, handling the weekly activities, field inspections. But you'd have a smoother transition if the state does go that route and does away with level twos being able to assess. There's also other things in that legislation that I would be able to combine the City of Albion with potentially the City of Marshall, the other units that I'm signing for, because what it's calling for is that an assessment district be created with at least 5,000 parcels. And so rather than you having to go out and try to find somebody to partner up with, or turn your role over to the county, which would be one of the other options in that legislation, you wouldn't have much of a change. And then I'd be happy to answer any, you know, specific questions regarding our proposal.
Attorney Harkness, the Councilmember French.
So the only thing that, in my review of the contract, and I'm sure Mr. Van der Vries did say that? Van der Vries. Van der Vries, probably, I'm assuming he won't have any objection, but as the council's aware, all of our contracts with outside contractors, we require nondiscrimination language.
Okay.
I'm assuming that wouldn't be a problem to put in, but that was something I wanted to bring to the council's attention. It's not in here, it's very simple to add, but I can email that to you, or if you have a document copy, I can add it for you wherever you want to. Just subject to adding that.
Okay. Councilor French.
I would consider that a friendly amendment to the motion, that this approval will be finalized upon conclusion of that language.
Are you making amendment?
Yeah, making an amendment, that way we can vote on it, it's done, we don't have to bring it back for another approval.
Is there a second?
Support?
Okay, so is there any discussion on the amendment to include the city's nondiscrimination clause to the contract? Okay. Seeing no discussion, I guess we can do a voice vote on that right now. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Okay. That amendment has passed, we're with the main motion now with that amendment. Councilor French.
I still have some questions to ask, so I just want to get that. So it's no secret to the folks on this council that I've been very dissatisfied with assessing in the past. And I'm encouraged by item 2.15, the idea that as part of this contract, 20% of all real property will receive a site visit to update the photo, effective age, and verify that no buildings are missing or being assessed, and they no longer exist. And I would ask that we be diligent on that. And so one thing that I can ask of the city, you may not have those records, is how much of that sort of inspection level detail was accomplished in the city of Albion over the last three years? Because my guess is that number is a whole lot less than 20%.
The only way we could verify that is once we have your database.
Right.
There's an inspection line.
Right.
But if that's not being filled in, then?
Or it's being filled in without actually going to the property. So that's my concern. So I'm happy, and would encourage you to make that a significant part of your duties moving forward, because I think that one of the things that we suffer from is, as housing prices have gone down, artificial creation of neighborhoods to meet some other assessment expectation of that assessor was problematic. And so I applaud your stepping up to replace a retired assessor, and with that, thank you.
Is there any further questions this evening from council? Oh, Councilor Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just want to make sure I'm understanding, you will be here four days per month on Wednesdays, correct? And this is a contract that will start July 1 and go through June 30 of 2021. However, either party can cancel with written notice within 60 days.
Correct, that's correct.
So just for the public to know what's in the contract, I kind of wanted to. The annual fee for the first year is $3,400 per month. And it increases by $100 every year. So $3,500 per month in 2019, 2020, and 2020, 2021 is $3,600 per month, so. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion from council this evening?
I think we, little explanation of how we came to work with them in this situation. We had a contract with Marshall, and to share assessing services with Marshall, and Tom, you might want to come up here before I get some of this wrong. But the City of Marshall, when our current assessor decided that she was going to retire from there, went through a process to search for a new assessing company. And through that process, I don't remember how many.
Well, actually, I think, I was going to look at the calendar before I came, so I can't remember the exact date, but it was, I know Cheryl was here, former city manager Mitchell was here. When we sat down with, actually, the county and the City of Marshall, and the thought was, there may be a better chance to try to draw more interest, I guess, if you will, if the county hired an assessing firm and then contracted out with the cities, both Marshall and Albion. And to my understanding, that happened, I mean, I know it happened, the county posted it. I don't remember how long it was posted for, but like I said, this discussion started back in February, and I know they had zero interest, zero applicants that were qualified. So we realized we're in a bind, the clock's running out, and we got to find somebody, and we don't have anybody that's interested. And I don't know if any of you followed it, but I'm sure the gentleman here can kind of help explain this some. But I think partly due to some of the legislation that's gone on in the state, there is a shortage throughout the state of assessors. And it is tough. Back when we did this before, that's been, I can't remember how many years ago. I know we only had one person, one firm throughout, I mean, we contacted everybody we could think of. We even got ahold of state and tried to get a list of firms, you know, and only one expressed any interest in traveling down here. So when we found out these gentlemen who do some work with the City of Marshall anyway, made an offer to help them, and then because of the bind we were in, made an offer to help us, obviously, we were grateful that we found somebody. So that's kind of how this came about.
Okay. Is there any further, thank you for that explanation. Is there any further comment or discussion from council? Okay, seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes, we've approved the assessing contract with Edward Van der Vries. Thank you all.
Thank you, we look forward to working with you.
Item B, an update on the water system, Water Tower. I placed that on there, I made comments during, Councilmember comments, I'm not. I placed that on there, I made comments during, council member comments, our appreciation for the staff's hard work in fixing that water main. I wanted to give, if you want to speak to your suggestion, okay. So one of the things, we have Nixol, we're really good with social media, and we also send out press releases to the TV crews and the TV stations, and they do cover that. One of the things that I think we should, and council member Brown brought this to my attention, we might want to try, is I know some of the school districts for, like snow days or other kinds of scheduling issues, will have a robo-call, and so maybe that might be something we would want to...
Nixol actually has the option of doing the robo-calling with it as well. It's another $1,000 a year to do that.
Okay.
So it may be something that we can add on to that, if that, if we think that would be the way we want to go.
So what, and then one question, I know a question was raised about, to, and I know I'm putting you all on the spot, but to our knowledge, is there, is there a requirement to knock on every door or to go to doors or?
I don't have that information, so...
Okay, that's something we can look into.
I believe the only requirement is for us to post it.
Okay.
In a public place.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
In terms of...
Notifications.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's any statute requirement to, you know, to go to the door, I think it's just, that's the norm, I would mention it in the law, that's what a lot of cities do that.
Okay. Okay.
And, and I think, if I can speak to Saturday in particular, what happened was is I don't think they had planned on shutting the water off to that many homes at the time they did it, and they didn't have the manpower and to go door to door once that happened.
Okay. Council member Barnes.
I would respectfully ask that I could get a legal opinion from Cullen on the letter of the law that Mr. Reese addressed in our charter at some other point in time, and you can do a little research on that and find out if our charter is there.
I can tell you it's not in our charter law, I don't think it's in our charter.
But I think we can...
You can, you can research, I just asked him for the research.
I have...
No, I think it was state law, and some, that's why it's, maybe in the state law.
Okay. So I think that that's something, it might happen again, because the water tower is going to be offline.
As the water tower is down, it could possibly happen again.
Yeah. And so one of the things that, Jim's not here tonight, let's talk about water quality.
What?
Water quality. Do you want to speak to that?
I can speak a little bit to their water quality. We just posted our water quality report, it's on our city website as long, along with our Facebook pages. We have a very high water quality for the city of Albion through our water treatment facility that we have. The report comes back very positive for what we do every year, and the things that we're doing to fix the system right now will only improve that, whether it's repainting of the water tower, replacing water mains. Irwin Avenue in particular, if the ice grant comes through, means that Irwin Avenue is going to get all brand-new water mains and valves throughout that system. And those are things that we need to be looking at doing in the future to help maintain the system and so we don't have these problems.
So like I said, this is an ongoing issue, we're monitoring it, and, you know, hopefully the council will eventually have to have some discussions about whether we want to do another water tower or not. I know that's something that we've talked about before, so, thank you. We'll move on to item C, approval discussion, 608 Austin Avenue. Director Tracy.
John Tracy, Director of Planning, Building, and Code. Unfortunately, really don't have much to say regarding 608 this evening. The land bank and county were meeting today on this issue and a number of other properties, so I have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow morning with Chris Edwards at the county building at nine o'clock, which at that time, we'll go over what's happening with 608 and our memorandum of our understanding, working with them, and also a number of other properties that the county has over here, what they're looking to do with those, so I can get that out to you as soon as we're done with meeting tomorrow on everything that's happening with it.
Is there any discussion or questions from council? Council member Brown.
Thank you, mayor. I am having a difficult time hearing. I think I heard you say that you have a meeting tomorrow morning?
Yes. Have a meeting tomorrow morning with the county regarding, they're, they're having a meeting today as far as the demolition projects and the properties, including ours, and tomorrow morning, I have a meeting with Chris Edwards as to what outcome, what the outcome was today's meeting, or this evening's meeting, and then other property, other properties that they have over here, what their plans are to move forward with those too, so.
So any further questions from council? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to, item D, request approval of Metro Act right-of-way permit extension.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Of course.
Moved in second, do you want to discuss?
So, just briefly, so it's, because obviously you can see it's kind of long, without getting overly technical about what all this is, is continuing the right-of-way that the city granted to AT&amp;T for telecommunications lines and related equipment, it just gives them their right-of-way at various points in the city, it just extends it for another five years.
We said right-of-way, we're talking about East, like the Eastman?
It's, it's very similar.
Okay. Okay. And no changes?
No, there's no changes, just a renewal.
Okay. Is there any discussion from council? Seeing none, roll call vote, please. Oh, council member Brown.
Thank you, mayor. So I heard you say, this is, so we, council, this will come before council every five years for renewal, or?
Well, I can tell you this, I mean, the particular renewal that they're doing right now is for five years, so it'll be back before council if they seek to renew their right-of-way in December of 2023.
Okay. When was the last time it was renewed?
As far as I know, it was 2003 is when it was put in place, it's like a 15-year right-of-way.
Wow.
Yeah. I don't know, I don't recall ever having to do a telecomm.
You haven't done it.
So I think it's been in place for 15 years, and now they're just seeking a five-year extension.
Okay, because I, yeah, at this first, I never heard of it. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion from council? Okay, seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Council member Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes. Item E, discussion vehicles being towed. So I've received a number of calls from different residents, and I've talked to the manager about it, and basically, the essence of it is, is can you describe, at least when it comes to our police force, how we interact with tow services, and then if there's any way for us to contract, or what recourse we have. I think what, what the residents that voiced concerns to me were saying, what they were concerned about, I guess, the time between police contact and the tow company coming, and then the duration of, I guess, the possession of their vehicle, and then, and then the rates that were charged, and so they were different. Some of those were, I guess, criminal, but some of them were also kind of, you know, a car breaking down and those kinds of things. I just wanted to get a explanation, what our process is and what recourse we might have.
Well, there's a lot of different reasons why we tow vehicles and, and reasons why we don't tow vehicles, depending on whether the vehicle is obstructing traffic, or if the vehicle is involved in some type of criminal activity. If the driver was involved in criminal activity, if the vehicle becomes evidence. But currently, the process for towing vehicles is towing companies have to submit requests to be on the call sheet for towing through Calhoun County Dispatch. They're the ones that have the final say in whether a towing company is on that, and they have to meet certain requirements through the Calhoun County Dispatch Authority to be on that. Obviously, we only have one towing company in Albion at this time, which is Zix Towing, so Zix gets at least 95 to 100% of the towing in Albion as a result of that. There are no other tow companies for, that are on that list in Albion, so it, we're kind of, our hands are kind of tied. One of those is that they have to be able to respond within 20 minutes of the call, which makes it difficult for anybody outside this area to make that call. Additionally, I'm sure Albion residents don't want a towing company from Jackson or Marshall towing cars from Albion there where they would have to go get them as well. So we try to keep it here local, within the city, for convenience of residents. Different things happen that make it difficult. If you were stopped on a Friday evening and you had no registration, no insurance on the car, the car may be towed, and you can't get that vehicle back until you get registration and proven insurance on it, which means you're waiting till Monday, which means you have to pay storage fees over that time. We don't have a place to store those cars to alleviate those fees, and so Zix has to store the cars, they charge the fees. We have no say in what they charge for towing or fees, and we don't see any of that money ourselves.
Just, I have one question, does, does the dispatch, is there a free schedule, or is it just whatever the company's?
I believe it's based on the company and what their fee schedule is. I, I have, I don't think there's any set fees that is required by dispatch.
Okay.
It's more about times, insurance, abilities.
Okay. So I think that's important, and we can probably set some other conversations up. I wanted to bring it to council's attention, because I've received quite a few calls about that, so. We'll move on to item F, request approval, board and commission's appointments, appointment, Ashley Reneger.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion that she... She is here tonight, I think it's one of the practices that I want to make sure, I want to make sure that we get back into, is having appointees with us. This is to the Public Safety Pension Board, which I believe is a five-member board. I think it's the...
Yes.
Yeah, the treasurer, two employees of the Police and Fire Department, those are combined, obviously, in Albion, and then two, just other appointments that the council can make, so, and she's cleared the background checks and everything, so. Do you want to have any comments at all? Just, just come introduce yourself, yeah.
My name is Ashley, and I'm a real estate agent. My office is located here in Albion. I applied for the pension board because my career is directly related to the local and national economies, as well as the pension fund is crucial for the retention and recruitment of officers to the community. So I want to help the community, and I also want to help my own growth in education.
Council member Brown.
Thank you, mayor. So Attorney Harkness, if I could just get a legal opinion from, from you, because you, I think your spouse is a police officer.
Yes.
So I just want to be sure that appointing her to this board is not a conflict of interest, being that she is married to...
Right. So I went, when, when this came across my desk, I looked at Public Act 345, there's no provision in there saying the spouse of a current member that's covered by 345 cannot serve, so I think she's eligible. The only time that there would be a conflict of interest is if she was still sitting on the board and the board were to vote on something that directly affected the retirement of Officer Renner. In that case, she'd have to recuse herself from that particular vote or votes, but other than that, she can serve on it.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any further comment this evening? Council member French.
Just want to say thank you for your willingness to serve our city.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Seeing no further comment, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Council member Spicer.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes. Congratulations to your appointment to the Public Safety Pension Board. Item G, request approval, resolution 2018-19, a resolution authorizing the sale of just the various parcels there to the Albion Malleable Brewing Company. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Support.
Moved in seconded, I'd, just want to explain what we're doing.
Yeah, so just as a point of clarification, because I know this was a little confusing, the council already approved the sale of these two parcels, I believe it was last year. The only reason the council's voting on a resolution today is because the, I want to say it was the title company for the brewery. We had previously asked them if they needed a resolution, they never responded, so we went ahead and we approved, the council approved the sale of the resolution, now they've come out of the woodwork and said, we need a resolution to finish this up, and so the council's already approved the sale of this, it's just a resolution to satisfy somebody on the brewery's end, so it's just kind of a over stamp on something you guys have already done.
Similar to earlier.
Yeah.
Is there any discussion? And, okay. Seeing no discussion, I ask for a roll call vote, please.
Council member French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes, the resolution was approved unanimously. Future agenda items, I do have one.
We have the Eagle Scout approval.
Oh, you're right, you're right. Thank you. You're right. Is there a motion? We don't, we don't have documentation for us, but is there a motion?
Oh, I thought you would.
Not yet.
Oh, yeah, we have a...
I would move that this council approve this young man's Eagle Scout project to install a Liberty Tree and other decorations as needed to, in our Riverside Cemetery, and that our, our city staff will work diligently with this young man to make that a reality by helping him with appropriate permits and approvals as necessary.
Support.
Okay. Moved in second, is there any discussion? Okay. Seeing no discussion, we will do just a roll call vote real quick.
Council member Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes. Future agenda items, what, I was, Attorney Smith responded today, he, the date that he said that he would be available is the 25th. So I, we're probably going to have to do it on the 25th, because he's in transition from his firm, so this is before that transition. So I'm probably going to call, study session for the 25th at 6:30, and we'll try to see what we can do, because he's, he's transitioning, so I wanted to notify the council that I just heard from, heard from him today, so. Council member Lawler, and then council member Reed.
I have two things, on the 25th, I'll have one that will be having surgery on that day, so I won't be here.
Ooh, okay.
And the other thing that I would like to add to the agenda is the notification of emergency, I would like to do that.
Okay. Okay. Just, just kind of discussions of options? Discussion of like options of what we can do to, okay. Attorney Harkness.
We can talk about the sale of Public Park again.
Yes. Okay. We also need to schedule a session for rental certification. And I think we can, perhaps, are you going, well, yeah, we can, we can send an email and figure that out, because we, that's kind of been pushed back, but we want to make sure that we take that on. Did you?
Yes, I did.
Council member Reed, council member French.
I would like to discuss the closure of Michigan Street from Dirumpel to Albion Street at the bottom of Howard Park.
Can you speak up?
I, I would like to discuss the closure of the street, Michigan, between Dirumpel and Albion Street, that little park down at the bottom of the park, until, from, well, we can discuss if there's a date.
Okay. Okay. Council member French.
Are we, just as a question, are we going to have a council meeting on the 2nd of July?
From, from how things usually operate, I would say yes, because it's not, the holiday doesn't, yeah.
That's fine, I just wanted to know. Thank you.
Yeah. Are there any future, future agenda items? Okay. So like I said, I'll be in contact with about Attorney Smith and trying to figure that out, and then also a date for the rental certification, because we have to discuss that.
Don't answer.
Okay. Seeing no future agenda items, everyone is here. Public comments, persons addressing the city council shall limit their comments to no more than three minutes, we ask that you observe proper decorum. Are there any citizens' comments this evening? Please state your name and address.
Dave Atchison, 108 West jury Street. Talking about the statement that was put in the record by the, relating to the contract let for Gov HR for the search. It's an official statement filed by the city, and it includes the following, and this is verbatim right off the statement. I hope all the council have seen it. And this is regarding why the lower bid from Michigan Municipal League was not selected. This is the explanation. The majority of the council determined that MML lacked the necessary dedicated resources in terms of personnel to adequately conduct the search. And I would like an explanation as to how that was originated, who drafted it, because I was here for just about every meeting you discussed it. I've gone back over the YouTube videos, probably three times per meeting, and have painstakingly gone through the reasons that were given. Mayor and I had a conversation the day after on the 5th of June, and there was no discussion of a lack of resources by MML being the reason that you had doubt in their capability of doing the work. So there was no discussion that I can find in any of the, in any of the council meetings that, that actually was any kind of a basis for rejecting them. What I do recall, what was discussed, is the preference for Gov HR, because one of the benefits that you get is a complete list of all of the candidates, regardless of whether or not they're on the, the final screening list, but you get to see all of the candidates. The problem with that is it doesn't open up the appearance of potential undue pressure being brought from outside folks. Could be a council member, could be a friend of a council member, to try to manipulate who ends up coming before the council, as opposed to you've got contracted services, I don't know why you need to see that list, I don't know what you're going to do with that list, but I would like all of the council members to pledge that you're not going to try to manipulate or influence the, who's on the list. And I would really like to know what was the basis for making that statement that unfortunately one of the city employees had to sign, because it's flatly false. So, thank you.
Is there further public comment this evening?
Hello, my name is John Dunkland. I live at 1203 Second Street, Albion, Michigan. First of all, I would like to say to this council and the mayor, everybody that I have looked at tonight has been over seven minutes. You said three. Every time I come up to this podium, you hold me to three. That's biased. Are you biased, or are you just don't want to hear what I'm saying? It's either one or the two. And next week, I would like for you to answer that, because by law, you're supposed to answer each one of us by the following week. You have not answered none of us, we the people. So now it's time for you to be held accountable. City of Albion, total local street improvement, First Street, Wild Street to Broadwell, $63,000 at 20%, $75,006. City of Albion, $2,000 local street improvement, Second Street, Wild Street, $61,000. Third Street, Wild Street to Broadwell, $14,000, no, excuse me, $70,000 at 20%. And all of these are from April 8th, 2015, and I received these from council a few days ago. Council happened to show up at my house to have a private meeting with all you guys, so I was there. But anyway, let's go past all of that. I have a sheet of paper here in my hand to say Albion was mowing a piece of property across the street from me for 16 years. I went to go buy it, I couldn't buy it because my neighbor owned it. My neighbor didn't even know she owned it, but we the people and our tax money paid for it. That's mismanagement of funds. Who allowed 16 years to a property to be mowed by Albion that they don't know? Can anybody here answer that? I have paperwork. Cheryl Mitchell, when she was up here, we spoke other potholes then. Oh, couldn't do nothing, but you could give me a notice to abate. Notice to abate. Notice to abate. Notice to abate. I spent $40,000 in one year. $40,000, and I get abatements? Can anybody on this council explain that? I do believe that's harassment, and I would like for next week, for Mr. Mayor to answer that too. And I would like to have my council speak on some of these roads, because I spoke to you on these roads. Can you clarify, Mr. Barnes? Is he able to speak, Mr. Mayor? Is he able to speak, Mr. Mayor? We the people would like him to speak. Mr. Mayor, we hold you accountable. Is he able to speak? Do not sit up there on that podium like that. Is he able to speak at this time that I am here?
Not, not while you're talking.
I'm done talking. Can he talk?
Public comment is still proceeding.
No, 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 I call to a point of order. Last time you called to point of order, just like this, that was going on now, the last meeting. I'm calling a port of order on you. So can we get a point of order, Mr. Mayor? We the people own this room. Can we, can we get him to answer without you signifying the whole council?
Mr. Dunkland.
No, Mr. Mayor, we the people own this. We the people. You are violating your own law. You are violating your own law. What do you mean?
Thank you.
Can you answer the question, Mr. Mayor?
This is public comment, this is.
I know, my public comment. You cut me off. Everybody else had eight minutes, five minutes. Stop being biased. Be true to the, be true.
It's been three minutes.
Everybody else had five and eight, I watched, the clock's right there.
It's been three minutes.
Are that, are you biased?
No, I'm not.
Okay, well, next meeting, you will show us that you're not, and give me more time, and you will let Mr. Barnes speak, and you will be held accountable for a secret meeting that you gave with me, that you won't stand accountable for, that we the people, he should stand accountable for.
Okay, Mr. Dunkland, you have to sit down.
He came to my house every time.
You have to.
You still come to my house. Don't come to my house no more without, without paperwork.
Yes, you can, I can, I can have. Yeah. Can you please sit down?
Okay, and I'm asking you, please, to comment next week, because you are held accountable.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment this evening on agenda items? Oh, excuse me, not agenda items, any comments, excuse me.
Richard Fuentes, 105 Linwood Street, Albion. I'm probably going to echo a couple of things that this gentleman over here was going out and said, in regards to the water issue here in town.
What was your street again?
105 Linwood. One thing I do want to say is that Nazarene Church, I believe it's what it's called, out here in Michigan Ave. I have great respect for them, the fact that they jumped to bring water to the people that needed it before any of you acted. That's a sad, sad fact. And then when they turned around and contacted the city to see if you guys will continue to help, city council's reply was, let's wait and see who else is going to jump in and help. Another sad fact that shows your character, go ahead, smile. Me and you had our talks before, and you know how I feel. Don't make me come out with it again. I have the right to speak. I have talked to the prior mayor before about emergency contingencies, along with Mr. Kip. Nothing wanted to be put in place. When I called down here, you know what I got for 15 minutes? Nothing. No answer. You, as the mayor, are responsible for this community, not for your own personal sake. You should have had somebody down here immediately answering the phone. I don't watch the news, I don't watch hardly TV, I don't have all that fancy internet stuff. You know how I found out about the water problem? I had to call Sheridan. Sheridan Township laughed it off, not laughed it off, but yeah, it was funny, because everybody's calling us, because our people aren't doing their job. Okay? Now, the thing is, when I found that out, I talked, contacted the pastor out there, because I thought it was Red Cross, they jumped in, within the hour they had that water here. I talked to him to date. They still have water available for people that need it. Your people told us, even when it was tainted, that it was okay to shower in. I got somebody I can bring down here right this minute, that just got back from the hospital. His skin has an infection from the water he took a shower in that you all said it was okay to shower in. Has a severe ear infection, and the hospital.
Oh, thank you. It's been three minutes.
No, I'm going to get my time.
Yes, it's been three minutes.
No, it has not been three minutes.
It's, it's three minutes. Thank you.
But here's what, here's what's going to happen. Whoa, whoa. The, the hospital has said that that infection came from the tainted water.
Thank you.
Okay? I'm willing to work with the city, the pastor is willing to work with the city.
Wait, please, Mr.
Mayor, me and you've had problems before.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm going to give you what you want.
Yeah.
So, your time is up, and.
I'm going to give you what you want.
Your time is up. I demand that you, in, in light of some of the issues that you've been in the paper for, I demand that you retire as mayor. Or come election day, you will be out as mayor.
Can we get a escort?
Please, yes, please sit down. So as a, as a point of order, please sit down. Sit down, please. So as a, as a point of order, the council has approved three minutes for public comment. I ask that you respect your other residents who want to speak.
You should respect our people in this board. Respect us.
Okay. Mr. Dunkland, please, wait, oh, oh.
I'm going to ask for a motion to, a motion for recess.
A motion for recess. Can I have a motion, whoa, can I, can I have, can I have a motion to recess?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, yes.
Yes.
Thank you. We're going to recess for about five minutes here.
You've got to get an officer in here, I'm serious. Well, maybe you got to run. Well, that's what we need to do.
You can. Not my, not my.
I'm not going to be here while you're coming.